Afterwards, I'll ask Councilwoman Meg Sauer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
I invite you to join me in a word of prayer. Our God, you who created all that has been, is, and ever will be, we praise your name. We acknowledge that you are the lifeline that allows us to live, to breathe, to think, to plan, and then to act. We give thanks for your goppy love, the goppy love of God, the love that is not judgmental, not conditional, but is everlasting and is here for us. As you surround us with that love, it gives us peace. We humbly come before you, and we hold up your name on high, and we give thanks that we live in a country where we can stand together and pray openly and share ideas. We pray for blessings for our city, for our state, our country, for our leaders, and for all who dwell within. We come to you as your children, the children of God, the servants of God. All of those persons in this room this morning are here because they have learned the value of serving our neighborhood and of helping those who cannot help themselves, of lifting up those who are discouraged, and showing them hope through providing that which strengthens our society. These people here today have learned that giving of their most valued asset, which is of their time, is a gift of love and dedication. Each person brings today his or her own values, talents, gifts, and ideas. And I pray for unity, as each man and woman work together. Guide each person here today through your infinite wisdom. We pray for knowledge and wisdom. We pray for the knowledge that each person here learns what decisions are best, righteous, and for the good of the community in God. We pray for wisdom, that each person has the insight, the inspiration, the inner guidance that you provide to make the right choices in how to promote, how to provide, and how to achieve that wealth of accumulated knowledge. We pray this day for Mayor Meg Cornet, that you bless him, as he has blessed us with his leadership. We give thanks that you have given to the community a leader who is faithful to his principles and to his God, as well as to the betterment of Oklahoma City. Surround us this day with wisdom and peace. Allow us to saturate every heart, every mind, and every hand here today, as they work together, as they make decisions. As we all leave and go into our separate lives, help us to hear your words, "A job well done, my loyal and faithful servant." In the name of our holy God we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. From time to time, we try to have performers from Oklahoma City University come by and tell us about an upcoming performance, and that is the case this morning. Marin Weinberger is here. She'll be performing in La Flaviatta coming up this weekend at Oklahoma City University. She's going to sing one of the songs from the performance, and she's first going to tell us a little bit about it because it's all in Italian, and as well-versed as we are in culture, it's probably going to go right by us if we don't get a little bit of help from Marin. So Marin, take over.
Thank you.
You might want to move to the microphone.
Oh.
I mean, I mean...
I'm not for singing.
Okay, go ahead. Here I am.
Thank you so much for having me this morning. My name is Marin Weinberger, and I'm representing the cast of La Flaviatta, which is playing this weekend at Oklahoma City University. The song that I'll be singing for you this morning is the aria from very impact one of La Flaviatta, and it's where the main character, Mioletta, who is a courtesan from Paris, is reflecting on what has just occurred previous to this song, which is, young lady Alfredo comes to her and says, "While you were sick," she has consumption, "while you were sick for a year, I came near to you, and I'm in love with you." And, you know, she doesn't know how to handle it, and she's kind of like, you know, "I'm not allowed to love. That's not part of my job." And she rejects that idea at first, but then she thinks, "Maybe this is, this is what I need. Maybe this is okay for me. I should love." And right after that, there's this song, "Sempre Libre," which means "always free." And she said, "No, I want freedom. I'm crazy. I want to party, and I want to have, you know, the best part of my life until I die." And she is dying, looking like she's sick of consumption. And so this song is sort of a question on that and her freedom, but she realizes in the middle of the song that maybe she does not love. And in Act One, with the two people together cleaning it to the rest of the opera, which is the greatest tragedy in opera that has ever been written. So, without further ado.
Thank you, Marin. And tell us when and where we can see this performance?
Yes, Oklahoma City University, and it is playing this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, 8:00 on Friday and Saturday, and 3:00 in the afternoon on Sunday. And you can go on okcu.edu/ticketoffice, or just call OSU and they can connect you to the ticket office. And we would love to see all of you there. It'll be a really magical, wonderful show.
Your special talent. Thank you again for coming down. Let's show our appreciation to Marin Weinberger. Let's see who has to follow that. Let's start with Downtown in December. Tom Raplagan is here. He's the Vice President of Marketing and Business Development. Come on, Tom.
We didn't want to follow that, Mayor.
You get stuck with having to follow that one. Good morning and thank you. It is, I saw him working on the ice skating rink just today. It's getting ready to open. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled. Nonetheless, you have the opportunity to tell everybody what's coming up.
Whereas Downtown in December celebrates its ninth year as Oklahoma City's premier holiday destination, and whereas only in downtown Oklahoma City can you experience the thrill of outdoor ice skating, exhilarating snow tube rides down the Southwest's largest man-made slope, free water taxi and riverboat excursions, free museum Sundays, magically lit avenues, and Christmas trees, a spirited 5K run through downtown Segway Santa OK Cityscape exhibit, and plenty of holiday cheer for the entire family. Whereas over the last eight years, this family-friendly holiday experience has attracted nearly 2 million revelers to the city's polar playground. Whereas Downtown in December offers a number of free, family-friendly, community events, and has become a holiday tradition for visitors and residents alike. And whereas Downtown in December showcases the Renaissance of downtown Oklahoma City and its districts, Automobile Alley, the Arts District, Brick Town, Central Business District, and Deep Deuce. Whereas downtown and Oklahoma City events are possible thanks to the generosity of Oklahoma City's top companies. Whereas Downtown in December is a gift from Downtown OKC Business Improvement District and is produced by Downtown OKC, Inc. And whereas festivities begin the day after Thanksgiving and run through the New Year. Now therefore, Meg Cornet, the Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim November 26 through January 2 as Downtown in December Days in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation for Downtown in December. Allison Schumate is here with Tom. Tom, you want to tell us about the course of events?
First of all, Mayor, I'd really like to thank the city. We've probably worked with over 20 departments and divisions in the city. As you can imagine, with 14 events and attractions, it's pretty complicated, but I think Allison wanted to say something about Downtown.
Well, we're just looking forward to having the mayor out at the Christmas tree lighting, which is next Friday, and kicks everything off. It'll be at 5:30 at the intersection of Robinson Avenue and Couch Drive, and so we're going to be lighting the Christmas tree, and Santa's going to be there. And so we're just looking forward to having everyone out at that event and all of the events that follow through the New Year.
It's going to be a wonderful season, and with the temperatures outside, it already feels like Christmas to me. When will the ice skating rink open?
It'll open Friday, November 26. Everything will open that day.
Okay, so that's the day after Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
All right, it won't be long. Thank you for all the hard work. We look forward to enjoying it again. And 2 million people have already experienced Downtown in December through the years. That's wonderful. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thank you. It's also Oklahoma Heritage Week, and Louise Painter and Jenny Campbell are here. You want to come up? We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas the signing of the Statehood Proclamation on November 16, 1907 was the most significant action in the history of the state of Oklahoma, and whereas the week of November 14 through 20 has been declared Oklahoma Heritage Week in the state of Oklahoma. And whereas all Oklahomans should pause during this time and reflect on our Oklahoma heritage as well as our national heritage, and whereas Oklahoma City has the obligation and privilege to play an important role in the observance of this great week. Now therefore, Meg Cornet, the Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby declare the week of November 14 through 20 as Oklahoma Heritage Week in Oklahoma City, and he encourages all citizens, families, clubs, churches, businesses, organizations, and schools in Oklahoma City to give personal attention to all special Statehood Day observances, to fly the Oklahoma State flag and the national colors, and to participate in and sponsor programs, projects, and activities emphasizing the heritage of this great state.
Let's show our appreciation for Oklahoma Heritage Week. Jenny, tell us about what's going on.
Of course, this is Statehood Week. Today is actually Oklahoma's 103rd birthday, and their activity is going on statewide, communities statewide. Today at Gaylord Pickens Oklahoma Heritage Museum, we have free admission activities throughout the day, and the museum will be open until 7:00. I'd also like to take this opportunity to recognize Louise Painter. The Oklahoma Heritage Association of Oklahoma has been very blessed with her volunteerism and her talents. She has single-handedly chaired Heritage Week. This is her 33rd year. She's traveled the state. She's met with every superintendent, just trying to get students excited about exploring our rich heritage. So thank you very much.
Louise, thank you very much. That's quite an investment. Thank you. And the city of Oklahoma City recently lost one of its longtime city leaders. Jacqueline Love Carey passed away, and we have her son and daughter here today with us, Bill Carey and Ruth Carey. Would you all come forward? We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Jacqueline Love Carey was born to Margaret Rumbah and Wenzel John Love on January 28, 1929, in Evanston, Illinois, and died on October 25, 2010, in Oklahoma City at the age of 81. Whereas Jackie Carey served the citizens of Ward Eight on the City Council of the City of Oklahoma City from 1984 until her retirement in 1995. Before her service on the City Council, Jackie Carey had served as a member of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission since 1979. During her time as a public official, Jackie Carey also served the private sector as the Executive Director of the Allied Arts Foundation and Children's Medical Research, Inc. And whereas Jackie and Bill Carey married in 1948 and raised six children, Jackie was a girls' basketball coach, avid golfer, and club tennis champ, and she was a tireless professional volunteer. Whereas Oklahoma City was home to Jackie Carey for over 42 years, and during that time, she served as President of the Junior League of Oklahoma City, Regional Director and Vice President of the Association of Junior Leagues of America, President and Board Member of the United Way of Central Oklahoma, President and Board Member of the Arts Council of Oklahoma City, Board Member of the Oklahoma City Community Foundation, and founding Director and President of Leadership Oklahoma City. And whereas Jackie Carey was recognized numerous times for leadership and public service, and one of her proudest moments was her induction into the Oklahoma Hall of Fame in 1984. Whereas Jackie Carey served Oklahoma City and its citizens in exemplary fashion for some 16 years, and with her passing, we now honor her memory and celebrate her forward thinking, leadership, her incredible spirit, and her love for family. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Mayor and Council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby extend their deepest sympathies to the family and friends of Jacqueline Love Carey.
We'll need a motion. Cast your votes. Resolution passes unanimously. She would have appreciated that. A lot of green lights.
Well, thank you so much for remembering mother in this way. Her years on this council were an extremely important part of her life, and, you know, she left Oklahoma City and came back and spent the last 15 months of her life here. And she could remember what Oklahoma City was before she left, and was absolutely thrilled now to see what Oklahoma City has become and is becoming. So once again, I thank you. We thank you for remembering.
Thank you. And I know there's some people in the City Council that remember her fondly, but let it be known for those of us who might not know, Jackie was instrumental in the passage of maps and the vision that has now changed the city forever. So she will be remembered fondly far beyond her years. Here's the resolution. Let's show our appreciation in the memory of Jackie Carey.
You know, if I could, I just, Bill and Ruth, I'm so glad you were able to be here this morning. It was really a treat to see you, and I just want you to know how incredibly honored I am to be able to serve in this seat and kind of take on a little bit of the legacy of your mother's great leadership.
Mayor, Neil and Ruth, I, as I told you before the meeting, of all the people I've served with on the City Council, and it goes back a long ways, I served with your mom on the Planning Commission in 1979, so my association with her in Oklahoma City politics goes back a long ways. But of all the people that I've associated with, she's certainly one of the most influential people in my life, in my political life. I don't pass any public art in Oklahoma City that I don't remember that she advocated for the 1% for the arts long before we were able to pass it, just this past year. She, I have lots of Jackie Carey stories, most of them are on me, that things she taught me and told me, but I so much appreciate with her. She was a person of vision and compassion. I just, she left her mark on Oklahoma City. And again, I'd never look at public art in Oklahoma City that I don't think about your mother. I appreciate so much what she gave to Oklahoma City.
Sam?
I would second those Ruth and Bill comments of Pete's, and say that before I remember your mother having the impact she had in this community on arts, I had the opportunity to work with her soon after I came here, and understood and learned from her about her compassion, commitment to those less fortunate and marginalized in our community. In the early days of the organization I came to work for here, Neighborhood Services, Jackie Carey was instrumental in the development of that organization and also with United Way. She was just, she was instrumental in programs that today we just think have been here forever, Mobile Meals and the Food Bank. Jackie Carey was a part of that in the founding and developing days. And her mark and her legacy with those less fortunate in our community, I think, has had as much or maybe more impact than all the commitment to arts and the things that we remember and see that she left, in the way that she left, that aren't seen except in the hearts of many, many people that she touched. And Bill and Ruth, just appreciate and love the legacy that you continue in your mother's name in public service. Thank you.
Thank you all again. We're on Item Three of the council agenda. You'll note several appointments here. This fundamentally completes the Maps Three Subcommittee process. We have a handful of additional people that for whatever another we've been missing each other on the phone and haven't been able to get with, so there'll be a handful of others coming forward. But this is the last three subcommittees to be listed here on the Office of the Mayor for Appointment. So it's the Trails and Sidewalks Committee, the Fairgrounds Committee, and the Oklahoma River Committee. So you'll see a few more, but this fundamentally completes it, and the goal was to have these people in place within a year of the vote. And so we're about three weeks ahead of schedule, and I hope to get these others in line, too. I'll ask for a motion on Item Three, B, C, and D. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to Item Four. This is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for November 9, and Item B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for November 2.
Move the items.
All right, cast your votes on the Journal. Passed unanimously. Item Five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, on Page Eight, under Item Eight, B, One, Item B, 1116 North Jordan, we ask that that be stricken. The owner occupied, its owner occupied, and we transferred it to Housing Rehab. And Item C, 17504 Valley Crest, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Under Items Eight, C, One, Item N, 1527 Northwest 32nd, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And Item P, 1135 Northwest 41st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? We'll reassess the council meeting convening as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are five items.
Move the items.
Okay, comment your questions on the PPA. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Will adjourn OCPPA and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket? All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Is there any individual consideration?
D, five.
D is in DOG. All right.
Mayor, just for the purpose of discussion, just to comment, I'd like to pull N, P, Q, and R, and then also, I'd just like, I'd like to talk separately about V.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, Gary, you want to go ahead and get started with D, five?
Well, this is, just wanted to let council know that this is coming up for final adoption in December. This is just introduction today, and you normally pull these to talk about these, but this is going to be controversial probably, the neighborhood. This is a rezoning for a on-cue type facility to go into a project close to a neighborhood, and the neighborhood is quite concerned about it, so when I, going to end up having a lot of discussion, I'd like to let the council know ahead of time that's going to happen. So I don't know whether anybody, I know there's probably some neighborhood here today. I don't know if any of them have signed up to speak. Francis, do we have anybody signed up for? Again, it's just for introduction today. It'll be for final adoption later, but it is going to be something that's going to be discussed at length when it comes up.
All right. And Pete, NP, Q, and R?
This is a series of items that allocate either surplus funds from projects or unlisted funds from projects, from bond issues. They total well over $2 million in total, and obviously, they vary. I am concerned that we spend this much money without a more council oversight over it. I would like to see these, I don't have a problem with these. I don't have a problem with any of them going forward, but I think this is a substantial amount of road funds and bridge money in Oklahoma City that goes forward with this being virtually the first indication that we've had of where that money's going to be spent. And I would like to see it brought to us ahead of time, where it's not, say, an agenda item, so we'd have an opportunity to discuss it, so we know how much additional funds are left in the unlisted money, how it's being allocated between various sections of the city. I've talked to the manager about it, and he indicated it wouldn't be too problematic to bring it forward to us before it's on the council agenda or in another form, so you're not voting up or down on the allocations the first time you ever saw it. So if you want to...
All right, we talked yesterday and again this morning about this. First of all, these are four items that are listed projects that we're trying to complete, and, you know, we have some overruns that come from time to time. Some of these are under construction. Some of these have not yet begun construction. And if we have an overrun, either through design, when we're in design, we find out that something has changed, we need some additional funds, or we get into the construction and have some additions, utility relocations, or some things that come up, we sometimes have to make those modifications. Primarily, we take that from two areas. One is we do have some contingency funds called unlisted, and the other area is in some projects, we actually, I know this is hard to believe, but we actually complete them under budget, and we have what's called surplus funds. And so we use those two pockets to, you know, when you have an overrun and you've got an overrun, you usually use one to help out the other type of project. When we put the program out, the geo-bonds in '07, you know, they have, projects have not been designed, so we're working on some very preliminary estimates, and sometimes things change. And so I'll get with council and see if we can modify the process. These all did come, they're all on the same day, as they all went through the Bond Oversight Board at the same day. And so I'll talk to council and see if we can modify that for the future.
I have a question, please. On the, these projects reviewed by the bond oversight, they recommend this money transfer?
Yes.
What kind of process they ensure, as, has the process working well in the project? Or do you have this money flying?
You know, they look at each project on an individual basis. You know, we do have some process on these. We have an internal bond oversight board made of staff that look at these initially, and we come up with the recommendations and go forward. Then we take it, do the bond oversight, which is a citizen board that goes over and looks at those projects individually, and then we bring them here to the council for the final reallocation of the funds. So it's a multi-step process. And again, all four of these are in a little bit different stages. Some of these are under construction. Some of these have not gone out to bid yet, so they're not yet, you know, it's not a done deal, if you will.
Well, I'm not asking that they be pulled off. I mean, so I'm, because I, at this point, they're here, they are all good projects, I think, but what I don't think is a good idea is that, is that the first time we see them is here. I just, I think that we ought to know more about that. I... I just, I think that we ought to know more about that. The bond oversight committee is more concerned, in my opinion, to make sure it's consistent with the terms of the bond issue rather than where the money's being allocated to. I mean, I, I'm not, not critical of them, but their role is to make, more to make sure we stay between the ditches with regard to what the bond indenture says, as opposed to whether or not the policy decisions about this road or that road, or this area, or that area, or this project, or that project is, is proper. I, I think that's our job, and I, I just would like to see us more involved in that process.
I understand.
Larry?
Just on what, what you said though, Jim, as you were going through there, these four projects, these four projects were all listed projects on, on a previous bond initiative.
I believe that's correct, yes.
And so these are not new projects that have, that have been put out. These are projects that the voters did approve, and for one reason or another, we need these funds to, to complete them.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Pete, you want to move on to item V?
Item V is just another resolution concerning the agreement between the, for the grant that the city's receiving from the Humanities Council for a project that city clerk and I have been very involved in trying to put together, an historical project to be, to utilize that wonderful space that's on the second floor, to make this a little bit more of a destination for people that come to Oklahoma City to see what's going on. So I, most everybody on the horseshoe contributed, and I appreciate that very much. There was a, a requirement in the grant that we raise money from private sources and, and I give Francis part of the blame along with me, but we decided that perhaps getting the council and former council members and staff members to do it might be a way to show that the city's invested in it, and the response was very good. In fact, we raised a little bit more than the minimum that was required for the, for the grant. So I appreciate everybody's cooperation. You can still give more though, if you want to, because there's, we have other ideas about what we might do with it. Anyway, I hope it's going to be as nice as, as the buildup has been to it. It's been very well received by city staff and by the different departments of the city that we plan to utilize artifacts and documents that are, that are housed, archived in the various city departments, fire, police, public works, water, to kind of show the history of Oklahoma City. And so I hope the project comes off as well as the buildup has been for it. It's been very good.
It has been a good project. Any other comments on the consent docket?
Yes, sir.
May I add a question?
Yes, Skip.
On G?
G, all right.
Could somebody explain to me why we're waiving the, the filing fee on this issue?
Because we did last time, but I know that's not a good answer. I think maybe Ms., maybe Kathy O'Connor could come in and help me on this one. I'd say, well, why don't we have Kathy come in, and then before we answer that question, why don't we have the, a presentation on, on the Ford Center? Could we do that? And then Kathy will come in and can answer that afterwards. Wayne Corvallis here this morning. The Ford Center, it's a large 30-plus million dollar project that's going out to bid, the big piece of the, of the Ford Center that'll change the external, it's the addition on the, on the Oklahoma City Arena. Thank you, sir. On the southwest corner, and it's going out to bid. It's already been to the Sports Facilities Boards, Mr. McAtee and Ms. Elia and Mr. Ryan have already seen this presentation, but, but this is a, a large, important piece to the project. So I've asked Wayne to come in and give us a little bit of an overview this morning.
As you're aware, this is the last phase of the Ford Center renovation and addition. If you look at your screen, the Phase C projects are broken down into multiple projects. Phase C is the new addition to the southwest, and it also has some interior remodel. Phase C one and C two deals with signage. One is static signs, just wayfinding signs, which is C two. C one deals with digital type signage. The reason we've broken these out into separate packages, we can bid and, and receive bids directly from the bidders that will be building this work, and that way we feel like we can save a few dollars in not paying general overhead and profit that we normally see with the general contractor. Phase C is the tenant buildout, which is the Thunder office space, and one of the reasons we've broken this out is to be able to clearly delineate what's the city's portion and which portion would be the Thunder's portion. These projects, as you can see the timeframe, you're approving final plans and specifications today for Phase C. Phase C one, C two, and C three will be presented to council for approval on December the 7th, and bid opening is scheduled for January the 7th, with a anticipated start date of the 1st of February. In the Phase C package, some of the things that we are going to try to have completed prior to the next NBA season, which is September the 30th, is all of the remaining interior work of the Ford Center. Right now, it's anticipated the Ford Center will be closed again next summer. We will close the facility as soon as the NBA season is completed. But that will not prevent us from going ahead and proceeding with the exterior renovation. So that just kind of gives you a timeframe there. As you can see, the remaining of the interior work will be completed by September the 30th. The exterior shell at the southwest, we anticipate completing that by March the 15th of '12, and completing the final project and presenting final acceptance to the council for approval sometime in May of '12. As part of the packages, the Phase C, the items shaded in yellow, you can see some of the alternates that are in there. The basic entry level flooring now is concrete. The base bid is tile. The alternate number four will be going with trazold tile, to be similar to some of the north entrances that we have now. Some of the other alternates is extension of the canopy on the new addition, enclosing the east dock, and adding metal ceilings in the entryway in lieu of lay-in ceilings. The C one package, which is the digital signage AV, this deals with a digital signage at the northeast and northwest entrances. That's right above the stairs. You would have a very large sign that you could do advertisement on, and it could be changed. And then the alternate for Phase C would be the exterior video board to the north. The video board that you've seen in some of the renderings on the south, we are roughing all that in, and that could be added in the future, but that is not part of our package. This just shows the event level, the lower level of the Ford Center, the area in green are areas that are included in the base bid, and includes a new storage area for the facility, which we've pretty well taken all their storage. This will accommodate their storage area. It includes the finish out of the Thunder locker room, and then the two alternates that would be closing, enclosing the dock areas. This just kind of gives you a shot of the new Thunder locker room. In the previous phases, the locker room was finished out basically for the player area, but basically there was no coaching office and things like that. So the addition will accommodate the head coaches, the general manager, and the assistant coaches' office area, some fitness area, and then auxiliary locker room that will accommodate some of our larger events like NCAA basketball. We're required to have four large locker rooms. This shows the event level or the entry level. All the area shaded in kind of the reddish color is all the interior renovation. Green is new addition areas. And this, again, just a blow up of those areas. The area to your right would be the New Orange Star Restaurant, which replaces the old number seven. The restaurant to your left would be the Urban Bar. This is a shot of the new southwest entry, looking north into the facility. This is a shot looking at the entrance of the New Orange Star, again replaces old number seven. This is looking into the new Urban Bar. This is looking inside the Orange Star. Again, looking inside again. This is from the concourse looking into the new Urban Bar area. Concourse looking into the Orange Star. This is again the interior shot of the Urban Bar area and the Urban Bar area. This is a shot of the upper level. The two areas in red, the one looking on the top of the screen would be the Victory Lounge, that is going to be completely remodeled, renovated. The one to the lower part of the screen is the Sunset, which connects into the new addition. This is looking into the Sunset. There will be food service in this area, some of it. This is just a shot of the new renovation. It does not show some of the furnishings that will be incorporated into that area. Again, this is another shot of the Sunset area. This is the upper level, one of the Thunder office floors. This is the upper Thunder floor. This is just a mezzanine mechanical area. This is a shot kind of looking to the northeast into the new addition. This is kind of looking directly north into the new addition. Again, looking north right into it. This is kind of looking more a little bit from the northeast. And again, a little further to the east, looking through the northwest. But I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, Pat?
I'd like to make a comment. As you might well have expected, the revenue stream on this project fell short of our, our expectation because of general decline in facts. I'd like to compliment our staff, years worked on this project. It's redesigned, despite a shortfall in revenue, product that we're delivering to our citizens first rate, everybody. I think really great work on value engineering, ending up with product that's all come out of, despite the fact our revenue fell short of it.
Thanks, Pat.
Mr. Ryan, we'd also be remiss if we didn't thank the Thunder, because they've been totally reasonable as we've gone through this, understanding the financial restraints and, and, and the realities and, and making compromises were, were needed to be made, and still getting the functionality and the needed benefits that they need to, to guarantee their revenue stream. So it's, it's, it's been really a good partnership. They've been at the table with us every week, every step of the way, and they've been, it hasn't been adversarial at all. They've been great partners.
I suspect they set a new standard for NBA in that way. Word I've gotten is that they are not always very, it's great cooperation, many cooperation.
Anybody else? Thank you for that report. So the building won't be open next year on opening day, this new facility, but it'll be open during the season?
Well, there's a lot of improvements that you will see next year when you come into the, for, for the opening of next season, and then there'll be further improvements for the following season.
Okay.
Kathy?
O'Connor. There was a question from Councilman Kelly regarding the waiving of the fee for the application for, for the downtown bid.
Typically, we have waived the fees for applications for business improvement districts. I think the rationale in the past has been that these districts benefit the city just as much as they do the area and help us offset some costs. Typically, the city is very involved in the creation of these bid districts, and they're, and so another similar situation might be city-sponsored zoning applications where those don't pay application fees either. There's also a resolution that dates from the 80s that says if you receive 70% approval of the district in, in the petition process, you don't have to pay the filing fee. So even though we're not quite there on the downtown bid, petitions are continuing to come in, and we believe that we'll be there by the time you finally hear this application.
So should we just do away with the application fee?
That's certainly something we can consider as we go forward.
We could consider that.
It would make a lot of sense to say that you have an application fee, and if it's for that purpose, and we, we embrace it in a way that because of what it does for the, for the city, then...
That's a very good point, Ms. Kelly. You know, when we, we didn't know, when we put these rules together, we didn't have any bids. So we didn't, I think there was a fear that we may have hundreds of bids, and they may not all be well thought out, and, and something, and that has not been the case. We have...
And, and the fee also applies to other assessment districts, like street assessment districts, and that was when that resolution was originally passed in the 80s, was to apply it to special assessment districts that were created for street improvements, for example. So it's the same fee, and it may be that we need to look at creating a, a different fee structure for this.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy.
Anybody else have any questions on the consent docket? We have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Moves us on to the concurrence docket, which has four items. Any comments or questions on the concurrence docket? All right, let's vote. Passed unanimously. On to item eight, A two. This item is also in Ward seven. It's to close, close the width of an easement, and it's just east of North Oklahoma Avenue and North Santa Fe Avenue, and it's in Ward seven. Skip.
Move it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone here wishing to speak against this item? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Moving to item eight, A two. This item is also in Ward seven. It's to close, close the width of an easement, and it's just east of North Oklahoma Avenue and north of Northeast Second Street. Skip, looks like the same item.
Yes, we would move it.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item eight, A three. This one's in Ward eight. It's a, deals with a planted access easement extending from Northwest 190th Place into a common area in the Canyon Creek addition at 1224 Northwest 190th Place. And Pat, we have one person who has signed up to speak.
Your Honor, thank you. Perhaps it'd be appropriate to hear from that person right now.
All right, Preston Williams. Preston Williams, are you, oh, yes, great. Just step up to this microphone and then give us your name and address for the record, please.
Preston Williams, 19213 Canyon Creek Place. On behalf of the, I'm on the homeowners association, homeowners association board as the vice president. We understand that where they're wanting to close that, we have a common area where a lot of people, neighbors go down to, and kids play and, and mess around down there. But if they close that area, we really have no other access unless they want to go down a spillway or all the way to Western and come down. So the easement was there in the first place, and we're just asking that it remains and remains there.
Okay.
And, and if it were to close, then can we have a, can we be given another access somewhere for people to enter the common area off 190th Place? Thanks.
Thanks for coming down.
Your Honor, thank you, and thank you, appreciate your comments. I was under the impression earlier that the issue had been resolved, the access property owners wanted it closed. This is one of those easements that have caused us problems in the past, an easement to make, provide access to the common area. This one was further complicated by the original builder built a driveway and entrance garage over there, which makes it even more difficult to use. What I'd like to do is to move this item to be deferred for a week while we have a chance to talk to the property owners and look at some alternatives. The people out there need to have the easement closed. We also have to honor the obligation that exists. People who bought lots out there promised that they would have access to the common area, so we need to see if we can work out some compromises there.
All right.
I would like to move for deferral for one week.
How about a second? Any comments or questions on the request for the deferral on item eight, A three? All right, cast your votes. That item is deferred one week.
Thank you.
Item eight, A four, is a zoning issue in Ward two. It's to close several alleys and street easements just south of Northwest 63rd Street between North Klassen Boulevard and North Santa Fe Avenue. Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. We have the applicant here, Dennis, please.
Mayor, Members of Council, Dennis Fox, on behalf of the applicant. We have worked with a number of the property owners within the area, and there is one, Greg Pitts is here representing the auto body shop. I think we've worked out a resolution, but I might let him speak to it. This will allow Chesapeake to further their campus plans and do the improvements that will be necessary over the next few years as they redo streets, build buildings, and move a lot of dirt. So with that, Greg? So with that, Greg?
Thank you, Dennis. Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Craig Pitts. I represent Lee and Tanya Lawrence. They're the owners of the Collision Auto Clinic, which is right there on the, on 63rd. It's on the 62nd property. My client's concern was this process would eventually, it would prevent them from being able to have access to the property. It also would maybe interfere with utility lines going to their property, and we have met with Chesapeake on many occasions. They've given us assurance that they will install a new driveway into our property that will prevent any interference, and they've also given us assurance that there will be no interruption to our utility services, I believe. Is that correct, Dennis? So with that in mind, I believe my clients have no objections.
Okay, ready to vote on item eight, A4?
Just a point, Mayor. Is there anybody else here? I think so. Mayor, just for the record, we've been working for months on this matter of street closings, and it ties with the action with the Traffic Commission, and I just want for the record, we understand that it has been agreed to by Chesapeake and the Traffic Commission that the traffic signal at Northwest 63rd and Chertel will be installed before any of the actual street closings take place. And I think that's all in accord with applicant, Traffic Commission, and we're all fine there. I want to just, I see Dan Ladon here. Dan, this has just been months and years in the workings, and I've come to see that you have, you're getting as good an understanding of the inside of these homes as you are the outside, and you've been spending the time with the people, the remaining people are there, so that we have gotten to the point today that we don't have anybody here and have resolved those concerns. And I appreciate that. Unless there's other, any other questions from council, I'd move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item eight, A4. Cast your votes. We're on to item eight, B. This is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. We have one person that has signed up to speak, Bruce White. Okay, yeah, Charles?
Actually, we spoke with him earlier, and we thought he was going to show, still come in, but I guess he left. But he's worked it out. He's just going to repair it.
All right, then we may be good to go. Anybody else here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight, B? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item eight, C. This is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight, C? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Your Honor, I may make a comment on eight, C, please.
Okay.
There's a, item D is a house at 3241 Hickory Stick Road, and the neighbors out there have indicated that they suspect there may be some structural problems as well, and I would like to ask staff to sort of monitor this project so that in event that it does become a structural hazard, that we can move to have it, dilapidated structure, correct it.
Which one's that again, I'm sorry?
It's on one on Hickory Stick. It's 3241 Hickory Stick Road. It's in Will Creek.
Okay.
I'm not a structural engineer, so I can't tell, but the neighbors out there feel that there may be structural issues as well, so if we can monitor it for a while, that's the, the...
Okay.
Thank you.
On to item eight, D. Do we need executive session on this item?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Executive session.
All right, cast your votes. That item is moved to executive session. On item eight, E, how about executive session here?
Yes.
All right. All right, cast your votes, and that item is moved to executive session. That puts us on to items from council. Sam, do you want to get us started?
There already, Mayor, thank you. Mayor, I would like to just spend a moment or two on the subject of sidewalks. I know the council, we are all appreciative of the fact that you've wrapped things up on the appointment of subcommittees, MAPS III, with the final appointment of the Trails and Subcommittee, Trails and Sidewalk Subcommittee. I particularly appreciate the fact that you put Pam Henry on this committee to represent those concerns of disabled people with respect to our walking system. And I would hope that with the appointment of this committee, and I know we're all anxious for all the committees' work to begin moving forward, I think the opportunity with sidewalks and trails gives us a very early opportunity, having a quick, visible impact for citizens, and not in any one part of the city, but across the city, in different areas, that we can begin this in some sense of urgency on getting some visibility begun. But I would like to just ask for this consideration. As we look at issues like in the paper again, on another wheelchair accident fatality, regardless of fault on this, it just comes back to haunt us as to the 40 years that we didn't do anything in Oklahoma City about sidewalks. So since the year 2000, it's been a tremendous game of catch-up, and it's going to be that, it's going to be that for years. I just, I think it behooves us, however, as we, as we begin to implement the MAPS III Trails and Sidewalks initiative, that we take the criteria that we've adopted for these arterial streets and look at developing a master plan for sidewalks on arterial streets. So as we move beyond the MAPS III implementation and other funding sources come available, as well as future bond issues, that we'll have in place, and a response to citizens that say, where's, where's the plan? All right, so you're going to do 70 or 80 miles in the city, but what's, what's the plan for Oklahoma City? I think at this point, it just behooves us to take a look at the criteria that we approved here three, four years ago as a council in selecting those portions of our arterial streets where sidewalks are really warranted. And we do that with MAPS III. Those 70 or 80 miles are going to come right off the top of that criteria. But I think it just behooves us to go beyond that, at least to be able to respond to citizens. We have a plan for the future as funding becomes available.
Well, and I think the idea that we can get more sidewalks for kids to walk to school, or at least parents have the opportunity to encourage their kids to walk to school if they choose, I think that should be a priority going forward. We're trying to get, trying to get, encourage that to the extent we can. Nice comment, Sam, thank you. Gary, we skipped you on the items from council. Anything you have? Okay? All right, Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things. I'd like to congratulate Jill McCartney and Kim Lowe. Jill, representing the Northwest Chamber of Commerce, Kim representing Wond, Jeff Grove from the Coppermark Bank. They put together an outstanding kickoff meeting for the Windsor area business group that met last night at the local bowling alley. There'll be another meeting for businesses along Northwest 23rd Street from High 44 out to the Bethany Line to talk about the future. That meeting will be held tomorrow morning at 8:30, again at the bowling alley. It's a great kickoff. Your city staff was there, Jim, did a great job. Kim Cooperhart, Allison Osho from the Chamber of Commerce, really appreciate their support. In that same regards, there are four neighborhood meetings coming up this week, Meridian Hills, Windsor Forest, Windsor Oaks, and River Park. Like to encourage the neighbors to check their schedule and to attend them. And for the folks in the Windsor Oaks area, Charles Alloch and Danny Bumpus have done an excellent job in resolving a very difficult home situation out there. It is on the demolition list from today, and really appreciate their efforts in working through and moving that thing forward. And then, Jim, as we spoke before, I've received, and some of the other council have received over the last several days, a number of emails concerning the on-street bike trail and the signage issue. And we spoke before council, and I wonder if you would clarify for our citizens exactly what's going on there, because there's been some false rumors that have been spread, and we just need to get the, get the truth out there.
Well, we don't want any false rumors. So there has been some discussion regarding the bike signs went up on the on-street bike lanes. The signs have predominantly started in the northwest part of town, Ward one and 18, and the signs are not particularly clear. They say use full lane, doesn't say whether the bike's supposed to take the full lane or the car's supposed to take the full lane. And so we're temporary halting the process to make sure that we have clear signs up there. We want this, we want this done right, so it's clear for both the bikers and the motorists as we go forward. So we temporarily suspend it. We're going to work out through the issues. We're not stopping the process at all. We're committed to going forward with it, but we want to make sure that as we go forward, we're putting the proper signage up and that it's clear to all, both bikers and vehicles that are using the common road.
In conjunction with that, I'd ask you to also review the location of some of those signs. There's one on the entrance ramp going onto the Hefner Parkway that might indicate to somebody, a casual driver, that the Parkway was an entrance for bicycle route as well. So I think that's something, make sure that the signs aren't used by their location as well as they're wearing. Yes, sir.
Until those signs are clearer, it does mean what for the viewing audience?
At this point, I'd like to ask the council, and I'm not positive as to what we're doing at this point in time. I've got a meeting first thing in the morning to get briefed on it, find out where we're going, and so I think we're going to have some clarity to it within the next several days.
Jim, Gary, I thank for listening, audience, till we get clarification. I understand, I have been told that the use full lane, the language may better be reflected in the reuse of that verbiage by saying may use full lane. The intent is that the bicycle rider with the symbol above that wording is understanding, and cars will be understanding that they may use that full lane for bicycle riding. And I don't know whether may use full lane clarifies it, but the law is that they may use, they may use the full lane. Most of us that ride, that I talk to, try to stay close to the right-hand side, the curb. Some bicycle activists, not just in this community, but in other communities, say that's not, that's not a safe way to travel. And the reason for the use full lane in a lot of communities is so that you're in the middle of the lane and you can be more, more visible to four-wheel vehicles. But the language is intended to mean you may use the full lane as a bicycle rider, and those passing you must give you that by law, that minimum of three feet.
Same, doesn't the bicyclist have the right to use the full lane anywhere, regardless of whether it's a bicycle route or not?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the part maybe was a little bit confusing, that there was a designation that they used as full lane, but they have that right anyplace.
They do.
And so I think that's part of maybe the confusion.
The other confusion is we have a buffer ordinance that's in place, and how does that comply with the full lane and the buffer ordinance out there? So there's a couple of things that need to be rectified.
Well, the other confusion, Jim, is the signs, new signs that nobody's seen. I mean, all we've seen years here, the few streets that are marked are on the street, or you might see a bicycle, you know, a bicycle symbol. It's a new signage, and it's, what's it, what's it mean? We haven't seen this before.
Well, the neighbors that have talked to me have, the other question is the sign that says change lanes to pass. Does that mean the bicyclists need to change lanes if they're going to pass something? Or does that mean the motorists change the lane to pass, the bicyclists?
That means the motorists need to change the lane to pass is what that means.
Yeah, Larry?
Jim, as you get your clarification, might I suggest that we can get some information on the website about this, and also get some press releases out, and get the message out that we're moving forward in trying to develop a coexistence between cars and bicycles that are safe and do, that encourage the rights of each one, and that the signage projects will be moving forward once we get some clarification on the verbiage.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Pete? Brian?
I'll try not to make a smart aleck comment, but I do just have a couple of things. On this 103rd birthday of our state, I wanted to recognize this is also the 100th anniversary of the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Tonight, they're celebrating a gala in honor of that and making a donation to the City of Oklahoma City of one of the guardian statues that will be located on the plaza right between the Chase Tower and the Skirvin Hotel. Should be a wonderful event and a nice thing for the city. And I also just wanted to remind everybody that this morning was the opening kickoff of the World Creativity Forum in our city. We've got 2,600 participants, which more than doubles the number of folks that have ever attended an event like this in our city. There are folks from 17 different countries and these regions of creativity around the world, and it's an amazing opportunity to show off what's happening in our community and a way to bring together the idea of creativity, not just in the arts, which most people think about, but creativity in business and creativity in education. And it'll be a very interesting couple of days, so I would encourage people to either get involved online or come down and see what's going on.
Skip?
First of all, I would like to congratulate the Central Urban Development in cooperation under the leadership of Brother Arnelius Crenshaw and James Williams and Greg Nagy in partnership with Church of Christ, Northeast Church of Christ. Yesterday was a groundbreaking for the 32-unit historic redevelopment in the JFK area, and they had a very large number of citizens who were there, members of the various partnerships that's working with this program, and it's creating a mainstay as it relates to housing in the Lower JFK area that was, of course, eliminated years ago under a different vision. It's bringing back affordable homes, and the program, the groundbreaking yesterday was very, very nice, and so I would like to congratulate them for the vision. This is a project that they've probably been working on for probably over almost eight years or 10 years, and have had some major difficulties, but kept, you know, the vision, and ultimately it came to, came to light. And so the groundbreaking was yesterday, but they have actually already started the construction of probably 20 of the housing condominiums in the area. My other concern, huh? It's right at Seventh and Martin Luther King, Seventh Street, and the area directly across the street from Douglas High School and the First T Program. One of the other concerns I have, and first of all, I want to thank the Public Works Department under Dennis's leadership. The sidewalk issue, there are some areas that are in northeast Oklahoma City that has had some very challenging issues as it relates to the sidewalks and some of the people who are handicapped and are using these motorized wheelchairs. But I want to thank them that on Lottie, that from 13th and Lottie all the way to Eighth Street, sidewalks have been developed in place, brand-new sidewalks, and there are two senior citizens facilities in that area, Maguara Plowers and Jaltz. And so it makes it a lot, makes the convenience so much better for those individuals to get out and be able to go to the store or different locations, you know, as far as a quality of life that they have and what limited life they have as far as convenience. But I think that there are some areas that we could do a much better job in reference to some of the sidewalk issues, and one is at 23rd and Martin Luther King. And this is an unfortunate area where there was two individuals a month ago that was killed there. One was in one of the motorized wheelchairs. But what happened was, is that there was sidewalks, and there's about 30 feet between Martin Luther King and the Sonic on the west side of the street. The lady was killed because she was on the sidewalk, and as she was trying to maneuver to get, continue on north, she fell out of the wheelchair because she could not get up on the grass area because it's a slope, there is no sidewalk. And I've talked to Dennis about this, and you know, what's really kind of perplexing to me is that, because it is a business, and they didn't put in a sidewalk when they built... to me is that, because it is a business, and they didn't put in a sidewalk when they built the store. Now, it's an easement, and whose responsibility it is in order to put in the sidewalk. And I just think that if we have to depend upon businesses in areas where there is traffic that are citizens of the city of Oklahoma City, and basically, it is still the usage of our street, that we should be a little bit more compassionate about trying to come up with some funding to create a safe pathway for the individuals who reside in the area. And many, many of these people, you know, when you look at the life that they have as far as the disabilities, they're doing what they do for themselves, because nobody else will do it for them. And to see people who are trying to go from, from the senior citizens' home where they live, Maguire Plaza, or Jelts, or Aken Center, these people are just going to take care of their life the best way they can. They're not asking somebody else to do it for them. And I think that there should be a high level of compassion in reference to some of these areas, and so, that's, that's one that I would really like to, to see a master issue as far as a plan, look at, you know, some of these areas that we know that it wouldn't take that much to go out and create a connecting sidewalk that's already there. And so, that's, that's my concern about the issue of the sidewalk. Now, the other issue that I wanted to, to bring out, and I'm just really frustrated with the way we're maneuvering everything downtown, but when we ask for something that's on the outside of downtown, it looks like it just takes forever and a day for it to get across. I got this newsletter. I think there are 16 streets that's either closed or being re-navigated, or two lanes for downtown Oklahoma City. And I know that this whole project, that the 180 Project, has a timeframe, and it needs to get done, but it just seems like that the timing of this is, is just really becoming a disaster for conveniences for people who have to come downtown for any type of business. And there's really no way for people to know what's going on. I mean, you sent out a press release, well, who gets this press release? The press release was sent to all the council. You know, you don't see it on the TV, you don't see it on, you don't hear it on any of the news stations that people more than likely listen to. You know, if we're going to do this, why don't we at least contact, you know, the major news networks or the radio stations and put this information out to them? So, people, when they get up in the morning time, and they have to come to the courthouse, and most people know two or three exits if they're coming from the, from the north or coming from the west to get downtown, if those are closed, at least give people a little bit, you know, notice as to some of the conditions that we're doing, that's going on down here. I just can't imagine why we couldn't have managed some of these, these streets and closed them in a way that it didn't create the, the backup of traffic, the congestion, and just a total inconvenience. I come down here this morning, and it was like a disaster, just when you get on Main Street, and it's like every day, there's another blockade. And it's, you know, we turn into the little parking space over here, and I don't know who had the bright idea to, to create the ingress and egress from, from the south to the north, and there's only one way in and out, and if they say that's going to make it better, I don't know who they was asking when they, when they came up with these plans, because to me, it's just causing more of a problem, and, and I just, I don't understand how I can't get a street fixed on 63rd, which is nothing but a big bump in the road. And all they can do is go out there and set a cone on the street and leave it like that, or a little curve at an area at a bridge that's been out for six months almost, and all it's got is two cones setting on the edge. But you can come downtown, and they're going to create all this here, construction and all the new development, and they're going to have it done in a benchmark time, and they're working on it every day. I just don't think this is fair to the total citizens of this city to, to have areas of their city not being attended to, because everything is focused to downtown.
Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a brief comment. I had the opportunity to attend the Quell Creek Homeowners Association meeting last week. I want to commend that organization on the fine work they've done, the able leadership, Arch Stonesifer. The voluntary homeowners association is a little bit more difficult to manage, but they've achieved some really significant things out there. They've put in a security patrol, they've made improvements at Quell Creek Park, and very supported the Quell Creek Elementary School. They've had a very important impact on the quality of life in the Quell Creek area, and they're the hard-working group, a very interested group. They represent about half the eligible homeowners, still are a very effective force. I would congratulate them on their hard work, and I would encourage similar neighborhoods that don't have mandatory homeowners association to consider the development of a voluntary one with the improvement of their neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, city manager reports. We have a report from Mike Carrier coming up, Convention and Visitors Bureau. Mike, good to see you.
Mayor, if I could, real quick, as Mike's getting ready, for those councilmembers, just a reminder, this is a result of some changes we made in the ordinance for Convention Visitors Commission. It was brought up with the money that were being allocated and spent, that it'd be nice to get a report of where they were going and what they were doing, and that was normally done in a committee, and we changed that to where now Mike's reporting to council, whether he likes it or not.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Couch, Council, good to see you this morning, and it is a pleasure to come before the council and have an opportunity to talk about what's going on in the hospitality tourism industry of Oklahoma City. First quarter of this year has been a very good quarter for us in a number of different ways. As I suspect you all have, have noted in reports that you receive on a regular basis, hotel bed tax is up, we're up about 15 and a half percent through the first four months, actually, of this year, which is an excellent increase. And I will tell you that it is not all roofing crews that are staying in our hotels, it's a general increase from corporate traffic, from convention traffic. As Councilwoman Sayer just made a comment a minute ago about the Creativity Forum. Last week, we had a small business conference here, they were expecting 450 people, hoping for that many, we had 540. So, we are continuing to see increases there. We're seeing increases in leisure travel. We're also seeing increases in our event traffic, obviously, events at the river, among other things, but also our equine shows at State Fair Park are holding steady and having some perhaps small increases, and as we see things this fall. So, we are indeed seeing some return in our hotels across the board, and we're pleased to play a part in impacting that. Just as a part of that, to give you a little bit of a frame of reference, we do research on a regular basis in conjunction with Smith Travel Reports, which is the largest research firm that handles hotel-motel work across the world. And the cities that we benchmark with, and we benchmark with 10 other cities in the central United States, for the first nine months of this calendar year, we are, our occupancy percentage has increased by 6.3%, which is a significant increase in the economy that we're seeing nationwide. And only one of the cities that we benchmark with, Memphis, has seen a larger increase in percentage. It's worth noting also that we have seen a 6% increase in the number of rooms available in that same time period, and a 12 and a half percent increase in the room demand. The actual number of rooms sold has increased 12 and a half percent. We've had a 6%, 6% increase in the number of rooms available, so we are indeed doing well in this, in this economy. As we look at some of the highlights for the, for the first quarter, one of the, one of the most significant things is that we have negotiated a new five-year agreement with National Raining Horse Association for their Derby, obviously, one of our benchmark equine shows at State Fair Park that will be here for another five years. They've been here for many years in the past, and will be continuing to, to return. In addition to that, some of the things that we have been able to book, Travel Media Showcase, they'll be here in September 2011. This is a group of travel writers, and we were successful in getting them to come here. They were in Irvine, California this past year. It's great to have those folks, because they write for magazines, for newspapers, internet, blogs, all the social media, many of them are other forms of electronic. That's publicity we cannot get otherwise, and turns into some significant stories for Oklahoma City and the surrounding area. The USA Wrestling World Team Trials in 2011, about 3,400 room nights. This is the Olympic team in an off-Olympic year, is what this amounts to, and frankly, is a precursor to potentially having the 2012 Olympic Trials here in Oklahoma City. We've been asked to bid on that, and we'll be doing so very shortly with the support of the All Sports Association. Philip Waldrop Ministries, the Women of Joy, will be returning also. I mentioned All Sports, we are supporting All Sports in their bid, and the successful bid for the 2014 Division One Wrestling Championships for the NCAA. Again, a huge event that will be coming here. Cameron International, their 2010 Annual Conference and Wave 23. These, these folks produce flow valves and other equipment for the energy industry. So, just a small sample of some of the things that are coming here and that we've been, been able to, to help produce. For this quarter, our leads generated were up by 46% over last year. That's, that's a significant number, and shows that travel, and indeed, conventions and meetings are in fact returning nationwide. Our room nights that's represented in those leads is up about 57%. All of those won't come to fruition, unfortunately, but a good portion of them will, and we, if you're not out there fishing, you're not going to catch anything, is the way we look at it, so we're going to go fishing as much as we can. Our motor coach traffic, 19% up in terms of the number of groups in the first quarter, 25% in passengers, and 8% in room nights. We're in the process of developing new ads that will be, be shown in different publications around the country, as well as direct mail pieces, and our new visitors guide will be on the street in December. We're in the final stages of that. In fact, it's at the print shop now, being laid out and getting everything final and ready for that. So, it's been a good first quarter. We work hard to continue that, and just, even though it occurred in the second quarter, I will tell you, this past week, we had representatives from 13 different organizations here in town. We had about 16 folks here, it's what's called a fam trip, that's short for familiarization, and you say fam trip because you can't say familiarization many times without it beginning a tongue twister. But we had these folks in on a fam trip. We already have six RFPs from these people. Now, these are folks that in most cases had not been in Oklahoma City before, but they were here to take a good, solid look at us. They were all very well-qualified, they all have good pieces of business that Oklahoma City can serve us over the next three to five years. A couple of them have also pieces of business that are further out and would be potential for our new convention center, so a great way to get them introduced to Oklahoma City, have them here, be able to begin courting them for, for not only current but future business. So, we're pleased with what's going on, we appreciate your continued support, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mike, Sam?
Mike, with respect to the downtown congestion, how are you communicating and preparing visiting groups as they come into the?
Well, what we're doing, councilman, is working with our local hotels. We're, we're trying right now to schedule a meeting for shortly after Thanksgiving to look at the schedule for next year with our downtown hotels particularly, so that they can communicate to their guests, not just the convention groups, but also individual guests that they have coming in. They can, they have the opportunity to communicate with the guests much easier, obviously, than we do. We try to keep the meeting planner involved in it and knowing what's going on as best we can. It has not presented a tremendous challenge yet. Obviously, that could change in a moment's notice, but we have, we've had very good communication with the city's staff. Andrea French, she has been very good about staying in touch with our hoteliers and with us, and this meeting that we're trying to have now is to look at next summer's work, some particular dates that we have concern about, and make sure that we know as far in advance as possible what the schedule is. Are there opportunities to shift work one way or another, a week this way, a week that way, anything of that nature, to make sure that we can make it as easy as possible for our guests.
Skip?
Yes. Mike, have you had any discussions with the, the golf pros as it relates to the various conventions and other, you know, attendance to Oklahoma City as it relates to the golf community here in Oklahoma City?
We've had a little bit of conversation, nothing formal yet, but we have been trying to coordinate a meeting for me to be able to meet with the golf pros, and right, it's just been a matter of getting schedules worked out where we can have a meeting of that nature. They've given me a couple of dates, those dates haven't worked, I've sent them some dates, and so, we're still working to try to, try to arrange some dates to be able to sit down and talk formally about how we can better work with each other and provide information to them. We've had some limited success with a couple of the pros specifically on that, but we're trying to meet with all of them together so that we can deal with that.
Well, I would really appreciate it, and, and thank you for, for at least making that, that inquiry, but even if you can't meet with all of them, I really would appreciate it if you would at least maybe contact me, because I'd make sure that there is a meeting with you and the Stewart Golf Course, who's there now and who may be there in the future, because I really think that, you know, with the downtown hotels and the convention center, that a nine-hole golf course that is, you know, less than 15 minutes from downtown Oklahoma City, and the convenience of getting back to whatever business or, you know, activities they're involved in, to have that as part of an attraction in reference to, to people coming to downtown Oklahoma City would be a great benefit to everyone.
Yeah, Larry?
Yeah, Mike, have you had any conversations, Eugene Sayer's on your board?
Yes, sir.
Is Jeff Penner also?
Jeff is not, Eugene is.
Eugene, have you had any conversations with Eugene about some of the challenges that some of our horse show patrons are having coming into Oklahoma City and the Meridian area?
Not specifically that. We've talked about horse shows in general, and some of the, the security challenges that they have had, but not.
Well, it involves security. I appreciate, I think it'd be worthwhile if you could initiate a conversation with Eugene and some of the other folks about that, and see what role if any of the Convention and Visitors Bureau might have.
I'll, I'll follow up with him. I know that he has been in contact, and we've, we've been corresponding on this particular issue, contact with the police department, and they've, they've made some good moves there, and so, we'll, we'll follow up with him again also.
All right, any other questions for Mike? Congratulations on 2010, looks like it's going well.
It's going very well.
Thank you all for your support.
All right. Citizens to be heard, no one has signed up. All right, we have executive session, we'll be back.